I'd like to call this hearing to order. Can you please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'd just like to point out where our fire exits are, this door to my left and through the door through which we all came in today. First, I've got a bit of housekeeping. I'd like to ask for a motion to move the application of Brian A. Frankenberger for 5 Jane Lane to the first application heard tonight. We have a motion for that?
I make a motion.
Motion by member Spencer, second.
I'll second it.
By member Menard. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
So moved.
Roll call?
Uh, we have a roll call attendance, please.
Members Spencer?
Present.
Members Sprada?
Present.
Member Menard?
Present.
Member Overholt?
Present.
And acting chairman Delaney?
Here.
Please take notice that the zoning board of appeals of the village of DePew will hold a public hearing on Thursday, September 12th, 2024 at 7:00 PM in the council chambers of the municipal building, 85 Manitoba Street, DePew, New York, to consider the application of Brian A. Frankenberger for the property located at 5 Jane Lane, DePew, New York, 14043, requesting relief from chapter 260 subset 26014B.I. to construct a shed within the required five-foot setback. A pre-board meeting will begin at 6:30 PM in the conference room of the municipal building, 85 Manitoba Street, DePew, New York, and any and all persons interested in such application will be heard at this time.
Okay, if anyone would like to be heard on this application, please step forward, tell us your name, and tell us what you'd like to do, please.
Yeah, I just need a two-foot easement, because I have it five feet away from the property line, and I got no room for my dog to run in my yard with my pool.
And a patio, and we don't have a garage, so everything is stored in the basement. There was a shed previously there when we bought the house for many years, which got old and disintegrated. We have nowhere to store anything that belongs outside, like our lawnmower, our snow blower, our garden tools, ladders, things like that, bicycles. We haul everything in and out of our basement, we're getting a little too old to do that.
Yes, I am.
To put a shed up there within that, you know, five-foot either way distance is going to take up a good chunk of our very small yard.
Can we just have both your names for the record?
Yes.
Brian Frankenberger?
Caroline Frankenberger.
Fellow board members with questions, members of the row?
What would the distance be from the shed to the pool?
It's got five, six feet easily. It's five feet from the, it's more than five feet from the, the pool is five feet from the, more than five feet from the fancy in the house.
Okay, no, from the shed that you're, it'd be more than five feet, more than, okay. That's all I have right now.
Anything from you, member Menard?
No questions from me.
Members Overholt, Spencer?
No questions.
It looks like you're pretty much putting it where the old one was.
Where the old shed was, correct, yeah.
Any questions, comments, concerns from Code?
Um, as long as you can maintain enough room in between the shed and the property lines to do whatever maintenance that you might have to do back there.
Oh, yeah.
Right.
And I would really like to see it at least, very least, five feet from the pool.
Oh, yeah, it'll be, yeah, definitely.
As long as you can maintain that, I have no problem with it.
Yeah.
Any questions, comments, concerns from legal?
Nothing from me, thank you.
Any public comments, questions, concerns?
Ma'am, did you, did you raise your hand? Did you raise your hand? Okay.
All right, so with that, I'm going to go over the six criteria for an area variance as part of the packet you filled out, the questions and your answers to them. Number one, will an undesirable change be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties be created by granting of the area variance?
No.
You wrote no, and that's true. Number two, can the benefits sought by you, the applicant, be achieved by some other method other than an area variance? You wrote no, and that's true. Third, is the requested area variance substantial? You wrote yes, and I don't think it is, so I'm gonna put no. Number four, will the proposed area variance have an adverse effect or impact to physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district? You wrote no, and I would say that's accurate. Fifth, is the alleged difficulty self-created, which considerations shall be relevant to the decision of the zoning board of appeals, but not necessarily preclude the granting of the requested area variance? You wrote no, and that one's a yes. And last, what does minimum area variance deemed necessary and adequate? You wrote two feet on side yard and two feet on rear yard setback. That is accurate?
Uh, well, yes, but they were, so they're looking for three feet of relief.
Okay, three feet.
I'm actually looking two feet of relief, I'm gonna have it three feet away from the property lines.
Okay, so then they're looking for two feet of relief.
So it's two feet then, okay, good. All right, so with that said, we have a board member willing to put forth a motion to grant or deny this variance as presented.
I make a motion to grant the variance as presented.
Motion made by member Menard, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by member Sprada, we have a roll call vote, please.
Members Spencer?
Yes.
Members Sprada?
Yes.
Member Menard?
Yes.
Member Overholt?
Yes.
Acting chairman Delaney?
Yes.
Five yes, variance granted.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Do you want to need any paperwork or anything, or?
No, basically, well, once the minutes are typed up, we'll give you a call, you can come in and finish the permitting process, which I believe, actually, you might already be done with it.
Get the $40 fee and fill that out.
Okay, so all I have to do is go in and approve this, we'll get you a call when you're ready to go, and we'll, you can come pick up your permit.
Thank you.
I'll try to get a call though.
Probably sometime next week.
Okay, I'll give my heads up, it'll be next week, then I'll get done.
Please take notice that the zoning board of appeals of the village of DePew will hold a public hearing on Thursday, September 12th, 2024 at 7:00 PM in council chambers of the municipal building, 85 Manitoba Street, DePew, New York, to consider the application of Craig M. Spear for the property located at 19 Lackawanna Avenue, DePew, New York, 14043, requesting relief from chapter 260 subset 26014B1G2 to construct a fence within the five feet of the right-of-way. A pre-board meeting will begin at 6:30 PM in the conference room of the municipal building, 85 Manitoba Street, DePew, New York, and any and all persons interested in such application will be heard at this time.
Okay, please come forward if you want to be heard on this application, tell us your name and what you'd like to do.
Is Craig Spear here?
Is the applicant here?
19 Lackawanna Avenue?
Yes.
Okay, why don't you make a motion to table at the end, or you can do the criteria on the paperwork by itself. You can just read through the criteria and see if there's a board member who wants to approve it, you don't necessarily have to hear from the applicant if everything's in order, if everything's not in order, you can make a motion to deny it, or a motion to adjourn it.
Okay.
But something like this, I think.
Yeah, I think you're right. Okay, so I'm going to read for.
No, ask for public.
Yeah. I should play to the half, though, right, because we don't know what you saw.
Yeah, you can read through the criteria, just before the.
So I'm going to read through the criteria filled out by the applicant as part of the paperwork they filled out, then I'm gonna ask for public comment afterwards, and then we'll see if there's a motion that a board member wants to put forward at that point. Number one, will an undesirable change be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties be created by granting of the area variance? They wrote no, and I would say that's true. Number two, can the benefits sought by you, the applicant, be achieved by some other method other than an area variance? You wrote, they wrote no, and I would say that's true. Third, is the requested area variance substantial? They wrote no, and I would say that's accurate. Fourth, will the proposed area variance have an adverse effect or impact to physical or environmental conditions in this neighborhood or district? They wrote no, and I'd say that's true. Fifth, is the alleged difficulty self-created, which considerations shall be relevant to the decision of the zoning board of appeals, but not necessarily preclude the granting of the requested area variance? They wrote, this area was not self-created, in fact, the fence created will give better visibility to what? Than what is there now? I would just say that's a yes. And then last, what does the minimum area variance deem necessary and adequate? They wrote five feet, and, Kate, that's accurate, right? Okay?
I would just note on the record, because this is a little unusual, typically we have an applicant here, number four, the reason for the requested variance is, I presently have six scrubs that are deteriorating and too hard to maintain, the area to be blocked is a dumpster and fence, very deteriorated, it is an unpleasant sight, as well as the parking lot of Mooney's, the fence would enhance my property as well as the neighborhood.
Correct.
That's the application.
Thank you. Any public concerns or comments on this application? So is there a board member who would be willing to put forth a motion to grant?
Just like normal, me, Code, any board member with questions.
Okay. Any questions from the board on this?
It's okay, but it could be a reason to deny it, so.
Okay. Anything from the board on this?
I'd just like to know what the slope of the fence is going to be, like, it's not actually defined in the question. I want to make sure they can see out of the driveway.
Anything from Code on this?
Um, although it is not on the paper anywhere, when the gentleman applied for the variance, he did inform me that his plan was to go from a six-foot fence and slope down to a four-foot fence, so that it was not a visual obstruction.
Anything else from Code?
Uh, no.
Anything from legal on this?
Nothing from me.
Okay, any further public comment, questions, concerns? So now, will a board member put forth a motion to grant or deny this variance as presented or to table it?
I'd like to make a motion that we accept or approve the variance.
Motion made by member Spencer to approve, we have a second?
Make a second.
Okay, member Menard, seconds. Roll call vote, please.
Members Spencer?
Yes.
Members Sprada?
Yes.
Member Menard?
Yes.
Member Overholt?
Yes.
Acting chairman Delaney?
Yes.
Five yes, variance granted.
There you go. You're right.
Please take notice that the zoning board of appeals of the village of DePew will hold a public hearing on September 12th, 2024 at 7:00 PM in the council chambers of the municipal building, 85 Manitoba Street, DePew, New York, to consider the application of Christopher and Desiree Benoit for the property located at 46 Jane Lane, DePew, New York, 14043, requesting relief from chapter 260 subset 26014B1E1 to install a backup generator within the required five-foot setback. A pre-board meeting will begin at 6:30 PM in the conference room of the municipal building, 85 Manitoba Street, DePew, New York, and any and all persons interested in such application will be heard at this time.
Okay, please step forward, you'd like to be heard on this, tell us your names and what you'd like to do.
Yes, hello, good evening, I'm Desiree Benoit.
Chris Benoit.
Okay, and we wish to install a backup generator on the southwest corner of our house, which requires 3.5 feet of our property out of the 6.8 feet, thus leaving us only 2.5 feet from the property line.
Any questions from the board members on this? Members Sprada?
I'm assuming it's a generic.
Yeah, generic, yes.
Generac, I mean, I'm mispronouncing it.
Yep.
And which way will it be facing the house, they're usually rectangular, will it be the long side?
Yep, it'll be the long side going down the side of our house.
Facing the house.
It's not gonna go up this way, it's gonna go parallel to the house.
Okay.
Yeah.
No other questions, thank you.
Member Menard, any questions?
No questions.
Members Spencer, Overholt?
No questions.
Any questions, comments, concerns from Code?
No, this is another one that we've been visiting a little more frequently lately, and as long as you can maintain distance between the property line and where the generator is, so that you can maintain the grass or whatever landscaping and stuff that you have there, I have no problem with it.
Thank you.
Questions, comments, concerns from legal on this?
No, I'd just draw everyone's attention to the note from Donna Martin at 42 Jane Lane, who's the neighbor who has no issue with this application or the generator.
It's on the last page of the application, if anyone is going to. Should I read that into the record, please?
No, it's part of the application, it's part of the record.
Okay. All right, so noting that, do we have a public comment concerned on this? Any questions? Okay, so with that, I'd like to read into the record the area variance criteria that is part of the packet you filled out. Number one, will an undesirable change be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties be created by granting of the area variance? You wrote no, and I'd say that's true. Second, can the benefits sought by you, the applicant, be achieved by some other method other than an area variance? You wrote no, and that's true. Third, is the requested area variance substantial? You wrote no, and I'd say that's true. Fourth, will the proposed area variance have an adverse effect or impact to physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district? You wrote no, and I'd say that's accurate. Fifth, is the alleged difficulty self-created, which considerations shall be relevant to the decision of the zoning board of appeals, but not necessarily preclude the granting of the requested area variance? You wrote yes, and that's true. And lastly, what is the minimum area variance deemed necessary and adequate? You wrote three and a half feet.
Yeah, I don't know if we answered that right or not. Uh, yeah, I think what you're looking for, you said.
One and a half.
Out of the. It was almost six feet. Right, six, eight. And the generator was gonna take up two and a half? Yes. So you need five. Well, 3.5 makes it. So that's what.
Four and a half.
We may have done it. 2.5, 3.5, so you're really looking for a foot and a half of relief, I think.
Yeah, that's about, that's about right.
Oh, okay.
Foot and a half, like.
Okay.
Okay.
Figured that out wrong.
So with that, would one of my fellow board members like to put forth a motion to grant or deny this variance as presented?
I'll make a motion that we grant the application for the variance.
Okay, motion made by member Sprada, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by member Overholt, roll call vote, please.
Members Spencer?
Yes.
Members Sprada?
Yes.
Member Menard?
Yes.
Member Overholt?
Yes.
Acting chairman Delaney?
Yes.
Five yes, variance granted.
Congratulations.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You are rolling tonight.
Please take notice, please take notice that the zoning board of appeals of the village of DePew will hold a public hearing on September 12th, 2024 at 7:00 PM in the council chambers of the municipal building, 85 Manitoba Street, DePew, New York, 14043, to consider the application of Justin Palmer and Rebecca Di Pasquale?
No, Eli and the other.
Okay. For the property located at 66 East Street, DePew, New York, 14043, requesting relief from chapter 260 subset 26014B1H to construct a driveway within the required three-foot setback. A pre-board meeting will begin at 6:30 PM in the conference room of the municipal building, 85 Manitoba Street, DePew, New York, all persons interested in such application will be heard at this time.
Tell us your names, what you'd like to do.
I'm Becca Di Pasqua.
I'm Justin Palmer.
We're looking to add a small portion next to our driveway to store our trash cans, because right now it sits in the mud, and we've tried other options and it's not.
Questions from board members, members Sprada?
Uh, no, I think we've visited this once before. You're just really extending the driveway where to.
Yeah, we're replacing the pads cracked, so we're replacing that, and then there's a section where we put our garbage can and recycle bin.
Yeah.
And currently it's stone, so we wanted to, while we're getting the concrete done, we wanted to have that there too, so it's just easier.
And your neighbors are okay with what you want to do?
They are, yeah, we, there should be a letter from our neighbor that they're too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, that's all I have.
Okay, member Menard, anything?
No questions.
Members Overholt, Spencer?
No questions.
Anything from Code?
No, I'm okay with it, it looks like it's probably, most of it's gonna be hidden by a fence that is on the property line anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah, what is it, probably about two feet you're adding?
It, yeah, 36 inches to, yeah.
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
Okay, any questions, comments, concerns from legal?
No.
Any public comment, questions, concerns? So with that, I am going to read into the record the six criteria for an area variance that you filled out as part of your packet here. Number one, will an undesirable change be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties be created by granting of the area variance? You wrote no, and I'd say that's true. Two, can the benefits sought by you, the applicant, be achieved by some other method other than an area variance? You wrote no, and that's true. Third, is the requested area variance substantial? You wrote no, and I'd say that's true. Fourth, will the proposed area variance have an adverse effect or impact to physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district? You wrote no, and I'd say that's accurate. Fifth, is the alleged difficulty self-created, which considerations shall be relevant to the decision of the zoning board of appeals, but not necessarily preclude the granting of the requested area variance? You wrote no, and I'd say that's a yes. Six, what is the minimum area variance deemed necessary and adequate? Two feet from fence, four feet from existing concrete.
Uh, yeah, so in the end, they're really only looking for one feet of relief.
Okay.
One foot.
All right, one foot of relief. So with that, do we have a board member willing to put forth a motion to grant or deny this variance as presented?
I make a motion that we grant the variance as presented.
Member Menard, make some motion, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Members Sprada, seconds, roll call vote, please.
Members Spencer?
Yes.
Members Sprada?
Yes.
Member Menard?
Yes.
Member Overholt?
Yes.
Acting chairman Delaney?
Yes.
Five yes, variance granted.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Please take notice that the zoning board of appeals of the village of DePew will hold a public hearing on Thursday, September 12th, 2024 at 7:00 PM in the council chambers of the municipal building, 85 Manitoba Street, DePew, New York, to consider the application of Jason Farrer?
Fryer.
Fryer for the property located at 3244 Walden Avenue, DePew, New York, 14043, requesting a special use permit for the keeping of non-domesticated animals per chapter 68 subset 68-1 permit required. A pre-board meeting will begin at 6:30 PM in the conference room of the municipal building, 85 Manitoba Street, DePew, New York, and any and all persons interested in such application will be heard at this time.
How we doing? Tell us your name, tell us what you'd like to do.
I'm Pamela Donnelly.
I'm Jason Fryer.
I'm Lilian Fryer.
Okay, all right, we would like to maintain our ownership of a little Nigerian dwarf goat. He has a playpen that we built in our garage where he stays, and.
Go ahead.
And Paul was there just, I think, two days ago.
Yesterday.
Yesterday, yeah, and, so if he wants to describe it in his own words, but also, like, we take him outside every single day, sometimes twice a day, and we walk him about every other day, and just like a dog, he goes to the bathroom when he's outside, but especially on walks, it's like a marking thing or something, and so he uses the bathroom very infrequently in his playpen, so it's good.
Let me ask you, when, when he does, you know, go to the bathroom, where do you, is it just like those of us with dogs do, how do you get rid of that extra?
Um, it's a concrete floor in the garage, and we use hay, and there's called batts in hay, like sections of it, and so we use a full batt layer, it's about this thick, and that allows us to, it allows it to, you know, to sort of mix in there, and there's a lot of surface area, you could say, with all that hay, to where, as Paul saw it the other day, there, I was telling him it's due, and, you know, it's due for us to change it out, and he goes, and he's, you know, said, oh, it still looks great, so we change that out about once a month, it's about three-quarters of a bale of hay total.
Okay.
And, yeah, and we just bag it up in a contractor bag and throw it in the garbage.
So it's similar to like a hamster?
Yeah.
I used to have a hamster, and we'd change it out every, every so often.
Sure.
Very good. Questions from fellow board members, members Sprada?
Uh, just a comment I wanted to make, where you have the goat stored inside, it's like in a, it's virtually a five-car garage.
Yes.
Every man's dream, as I mentioned yesterday, but that garage is heated, it's air-conditioned, and purified air in there.
Yeah.
So, I mean, it's state-of-the-art.
Thank you.
You put a lot of thought into it, I thought.
Thank you so much, and it is dry-walled and insulated also.
Paul's words, would the goat has it better than most of us do?
Yeah, and partially carpeted where the home theater is, I have a full home theater in there. It's like home.
Okay, member Menard, anything for you?
Is there any issues with the construction of the garage other than the inside? Is everything intact? Roof is intact?
Uh, the roof does need to be replaced.
So in the winter, water cannot get in there?
Oh, no, it can't, no, we have a tarp on it right now until we can get the, but it's, what you call it, real billboard vinyl, it's very thick, very heavy-duty.
But it's not a appropriate roofing at this point?
It's not, we.
So in three months, if there's not appropriate roofing material on the roof, what will happen to the water that's leaking into the garage?
Well, I have a whole lot of my valuable things in there.
Exactly.
I own garden scale trains.
I understand, but what will happen in the wintertime with animals in that garage, an animal in that garage, per se, if this roof leaks without the appropriate roofing material in place?
I understand your concern, the roofing that, you know, that's real billboard vinyl that I put on there, it's, I just put it on half of the roof maybe two weeks ago, it's brand-new, and I need to do the front of the roof, the front half of it as well.
Okay.
And so once that's on there on the front, then I don't think we should have any issue with water ingress with this new, better kind of a vinyl tarp. I've been using standard Harbor Freight ones to cover it for a couple of years now, and we've been trying to save for that, but just not able to. She's, works from home, and I'm, I'm a veteran, PTSD, I'm SSI, so I only get like $600 a month, and we only charge $800 a month for our rent for tenants upstairs, and we're actually in the process of kicking them out now, I don't believe we'll get another eight rent from them, so can't do it anytime soon. We did. We did, did just discuss looking into a home equity, home improvement type loan, and so.
I think a better question might be, did the roof have issues last winter, and didn't any water get in if it had issues last winter?
No, I've had no water ingress since, since I started tarping it to stop that.
Okay. That's fine. Thank you.
Okay.
Questions from Members Spencer, Member Overhold?
How long have we had the goat? We got him last year in July. We believe he was born in April. We got him from the Springville auction, so we kind of consider we saved him.
Rescue goat?
Yeah. And I raised him just one-on-one, you know. I practically live in the garage. You know, so anyway, I'm around him 24/7, and I raised him to know his routines and his words. He'll go pee-pee when I tell him to, and he really listens. He's a good one.
I have a three-year-old I'd like to introduce you to.
He's a forever three-year-old. That's, that's the saying about goats, is they'll be their forever toddler.
Member Overhold, anything over there?
My only question is, one of the articles, are you storing the extra man from the goat in a metal container?
Yeah.
It's usually covered with the metal cover.
Me and Don had a little bit of a laugh over that question. It's, no. Way is to, we change it out fully and completely and throw it out the contractor bag that we fill up immediately and.
It's in your regular household garbage?
For that week's garbage.
It's a contractor bag.
What's a contractor bag?
Yeah.
Oh, that's the super-heavy-duty garbage bag.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, that's all.
Any questions, comments, concerns from Code on this?
Um, I don't really have any questions. I do have a few comments. This questionnaire is, seems to be geared mostly toward like chickens. Obviously, a goat is a different animal, no pun intended. I feel that since the day of Dollar General, when the goat went to Dollar General, that is the only time we have ever heard of Billy.
Yep.
It wasn't really a complaint. None of your neighbors have complained, so that in itself is a good thing. Obviously, people aren't complaining, so, and it's pretty tight quarters over there. I mean, it's Walden Avenue. You're probably right on top of the guy next door.
We thought, oh, they're on top of us, kind of looking over our backyard.
Yeah.
And we don't have access to that side of our house because it's completely fenced in for their backyard.
But what I was getting at is, speaking of the neighbors, did you, were you able to get letters from the neighbors?
Yep, I sure was, and I was surprised. We were surprised, me and Lily went around, that we got positive reactions. They were all, they were all like, we love the goat and all that, so, yeah, we got. All the signatures.
Bring it up here.
One of them's from an employee at Dollar General.
Okay, well, more, more than, more than you were asked, so that's great.
Yep.
Yeah, sure.
While they're looking at that, I just, I'd like to kind of reiterate what Member Menard was getting at basically is, and I'm sure Don has informed you that, although it is a heavy-duty tarp, tarp is not a long-term covering for a roof. So if you could make that fix a priority in the, in the near future, you know, it would be to everyone's benefit. You don't want to, that's an expensive piece of material.
It was.
It's probably gonna deteriorate over one winter, if not disappear entirely with these goofy storms that we have.
Yeah.
You know, asphalt shingles are a lot sturdier.
Sure.
And in order to keep, you know, your goat, your family, and all of your personal belongings and everything safe, it would probably be in your best interest for a patch job.
Yeah, I hear you.
You know, you don't need to do a whole new roof, but to save up a little bit and have somebody come patch it up would probably be a really good idea.
It needs a full new roofing.
Well, for now, if a patch job does the trick, I would go with that. You don't want to, I mean, that tarp could probably be used for 600 different things.
Yeah.
It'd be worth hanging on to instead of losing it in a storm.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just for saying, the Harbor Freight ones would last like one year.
Oh, yeah.
And I would add another layer on top to, because one kind of protects the other one.
Right.
A little bit, especially from the rough shingles that are, they were all completely disintegrating and crumbling.
Right. And I understand the financial burden, especially if you're going to be losing a tenant soon, but like I said, if you could just kind of make that a priority, that would be amazing.
Yeah. Start looking into the, oh my goodness.
Questions, comments, concerns from legal?
Nothing from me. We discussed in the pre-board meeting, this is a newer law passed in September of 2024, I think, September of 2024?
And it didn't show, right?
Oh, this was printed with the date on it, I'm sorry. This is a newer law passed in May of 2022. Sorry, I read the date in the corner. And the primary purpose is to make sure non-domesticated animals don't run wild. If there's an applicant presenting responsible care for a non-domesticated animal, I think that weighs heavily in their favor. Nothing else from me, though.
Public comment?
I can hardly hear what he was saying. How many goats does he want in here?
Just one.
One goat?
Just one.
Okay.
If you're gonna talk, we need your name and address. I'm sorry to make you stand up.
Okay. Yep. Okay. My other question is this.
I just need your name.
Can we please start with your name and address?
Joan Oklesinski. I'm sorry, what was that?
Pardon?
Your name again, ma'am?
Joan Oklesinski.
Can you spell the last name for me?
G L E D C I N S K I.
And your property address?
37 Boswick.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, sir, go ahead.
Okay, my question is this. I don't know how to quite say it. Where is the animal gonna poop? Because we had a rat problem in the area. I want to make sure we don't have feces laying around on the property.
From what I understand, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but the goat has a pen, okay, and it poops in the, in the straw in the pen, okay? And then every month at least, the straw and hay in the pen gets changed out for new hay.
Okay.
And we don't have any rat problems in the garage?
Okay.
I'm sorry? I can't hear.
He said there's, there has not been any, any rat problems in the garage.
I hope not, okay. And the animal's gonna be properly, it's gonna have a nice home, heated, look and everything?
It's all heated in the garage where the, where the goat stays, yeah.
Okay.
Local air-conditioned, so.
Yeah.
Okay, now, if there is a rat problem?
Well.
It's close to their property?
So if there is something that, okay, you want to handle that?
Ma'am, if there is a rat problem, we can address it, but I would just like to let everyone know that there are rats all over the village of DePew.
Oh, I know.
They're everywhere.
We had the big problem, and we haven't seen many, but it took a long time to get rid of them.
Well, my point is, it's hard to pinpoint where they come and where they go, and where they live, and where they're eating, but if, if there does seem to be an uptick, that is something that we will monitor.
Okay.
And just so everyone's aware, this is a two-year permit. They have to come back every two years.
Okay. All right.
So if there's rodent problems you have proof of in two years, please tell us about it. Don't wait two years, though.
Okay.
You, you can respond, sir.
Sure. I'd like to just mention my rat mitigation measures. I have two rat traps, and I have them put on my shelf right next to my door of the garage. It's just where I keep them. And whenever I see a rat in the yard, I'll set a trap out that night where I saw it go, and I usually get it on the same night as I see it. So I'm big about the rats, because if there are around, I have had one or two come in the garage over the last several years, and I'll set a trap in the garage then and catch them right away, too. So I don't like them. Nobody who likes them, so I, I get rid of them.
Yeah, but they haven't appeared at all recently.
Yeah.
Good.
Chairman? I just wanted to make a comment. I discussed this with you when I was there.
Yeah.
About not only the feces, but the food for the, for Billy.
Yeah.
Would attract rodents.
Yeah.
And if there is a rodent problem, the county of Erie will come out and they will bait your area and then follow up. They put these little black traps, probably a foot square.
Yeah.
They will follow up on it and, you know, get rid of whatever, you know, they catch. And I had that problem years ago, and the county's very diligent about that.
Oh, cool.
So if you do have a problem, they would be the ones to contact.
Okay.
They do a good job.
Excellent, thank you, Paul. I also repaired the part of the drywall where I thought it came in, in the front corner of the garage.
Okay, any other public comment, concern? Please step forward, sir.
Peterson, 54, about that. So I just need to, I didn't hear everything from the back?
Yes.
So he had the goat since when?
July of last year.
Of last year. And what brought you to this?
It appears, this is the first time I heard about the Dollar General.
Yeah.
But possibly from Dollar General, that he jumped over our outdoor fence once when he was younger and went right to Dollar General, because I walk in there often. So he went right to where he's familiar with, and.
How, how is your fence?
It's only a three-foot, but now he knows, he's a good boy, he doesn't jump over it at all anymore. He just stays in the yard at this one. And we're always out there with him unless it's something like, I can't call Pam to come out because she's working, because she works from home. Like, say I run into a house to go to the bathroom, that's 30 seconds, and he's, he doesn't walk by here.
Okay, so when it was at Dollar General, he escaped from the yard and it was wandering or something, and then they called it in?
Yeah, he made a V-line straight there.
So it's not.
It happened when he was really young.
Yeah. Yeah. My son lives near Beekman Farms, which is near Boswick. Goats all over.
Right.
So I get the cuteness, and I get the, I get all that. But it, so it wasn't something like you were taking it into the place or anything like that?
No.
Because this is not a therapy house, right?
No. No, but it certainly has been probably one of the only three sources of happiness.
Well, that, no, that's for you, it is, but recognize this. I guess what I'm asking is, want to be careful about setting precedent going forward, so some might not have as cute and playful one as you have. You know what I'm saying? I'll have.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Again, this is a two-year. Two-year special use permit.
That's correct. So my, this.
Well, the criteria isn't really relevant, so I think I'd just ask if there's a motion based on the presentation today.
So based on the application put forward, do we have a motion to grant or deny this permit as presented?
I make the motion that we issue the permit as.
Okay, Member Spencer makes a motion to grant the permit. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Second of our Members Sfrata, roll call vote, please.
Member Spencer?
Yes.
Member Sfrata?
Yes.
Member Menard?
Yes.
Member Overhold?
Yes.
Acting Chairman Delaney?
Yes.
Five yes, variance granted.
Hey, hey, thank you, sir.
You're very welcome.
Have a great evening.
Thank you.
You too.
Okay. One more.
Please take notice that the zoning board of appeals of the village of DePew will hold a public hearing on Thursday, September 12th, 2024, 7:00 PM in the council chambers of the municipal building, 85 Manitoba Street, DePew, New York, to consider the application of David Simkin for the property located at 99 Harvard Ave, DePew, New York, 14043, requesting relief from chapter 260, subset 26014B1H, to construct a driveway that projects greater than five feet in front of the principal dwelling. A pre-board meeting will begin at 6:30 PM in the conference room of the municipal building, 85 Manitoba Street, DePew, New York, and any and all persons interested in such application will be heard at this time.
Please step forward if you're interested in speaking on this application.
Okay, there's no applicant here, so let's do this right. I will read the request. You go through the criteria.
Yes, sir.
Go to the departments and then see if there's any public concerns or comments, and you can vote on it on the papers. Make a motion to adjourn or a motion to grant.
Okay.
Or grant.
Yes, sir.
Okay, for the record, Mr. Simkin, his reason for the request for a hearing before the zoning board of appeals is to replace an existing driveway with a wider driveway and expand his front porch.
That's all?
That's all.
Okay. Yeah, switching that. Okay, so I'm gonna read through the criteria as part of his application. Number one, will an undesirable change be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties be created by granting of the area variance? He wrote no, and I would say that's true. Number two, can the benefits sought by him, the applicant, be achieved by some other method other than an area variance? He wrote no, and I'd say that's accurate. Third is the requested area variance substantial? He wrote no, and I would say that's true. Fourth, will the proposed area variance have an adverse effect or impact the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district? He wrote no, and I'd say that's true. Fifth, is the alleged difficulty self-created? Which considerations shall be relevant to the decision of the zoning board of appeals, but not necessarily preclude the granting of the requested area variance? He wrote yes, and that's true. Lastly, what is the minimum area variance deemed necessary and adequate? He wrote three feet, and I believe that that's true. So based on the application, do we have a board member, I'm sorry, any questions, comments, concerns from Code on this?
Uh, no. They are widening the driveway going closer to the primary structure. The apron and sidewalk will not be touched, so nothing else is going to be widened other than that portion that's closer to the house. And it will taper back to the apron.
Anything from legal?
Nothing from me.
No, all set.
Any public comments, questions, concerns?
Peterson, 54, about that. There is no other house that it's encroaching on?
Okay. Um, what's happening? Hold on one second. All right, so this one, no, because they are going toward the interior of the house, not toward the property line.
Why, the concrete doesn't go to the garage or something like that now?
Some of the garage.
What's that?
You saw the drawing, you could see.
Yeah, here it comes.
Driving from the street, there's no garage. There are 50 foot lots, so there's not, there's 10 feet here between the house, so there's going to be widened driveway.
Where's the house here?
Yeah.
In neighbors? We don't know.
Not relevant, because they're already on the property line.
Okay.
They're not going that way, they're going this way. So he wants to widen.
So we probably gave him a variance at some point in time, or not?
Probably was built like that, the house is the same. So he's going, looks like eight feet to the front of the house, and then raise this at five feet, so he's asking for three feet.
We've done, we've done quite a few of these on Harvard already. It always seems to be the same issue. It always seems to be the same issue. Most of them have this single-car driveway that bucks right up to the property line. There's nowhere to put more than one or two vehicles.
This is the front of the house or back?
Yeah, this is the front. So he's just gonna, the apron's here, the sidewalk, and then from the sidewalk, it's gonna taper up a little bit and then match up with the... Yeah, and then match right up with the front.
Is it typical that these people aren't showing up, or?
No.
No, this is, this is unusual.
Extremely unusual, very unusual.
First time it's happened.
Second time.
Actually, second time, but the first time was also today.
It was tonight, I know, exactly. I have never heard this before like that, and...
Yeah.
I find it odd that we move forward without them present.
I think it's a application that would likely have been granted. I don't want to pre-critique the issue for the board, but something like this, it's uncontroversial, rather straightforward, and is something we're talking about changing the code?
Yeah.
To make it so you don't need a variance, it's appropriate, the essence of time economy, to just move along with it.
Okay.
Uh, but, of course, any board member can vote no, and there's not going to be a frowning face or someone complaining about it because they're not here.
And it could also be tabled, too. Okay.
Just a comment I'd like to make is, either this person or one of his neighbors on that side of Harvard, uh, the way the contractor put the houses in, I think he did that for his reason, to save money, get more houses on the lots because of the size of the lot, and I think everybody on that side of Harvard has the same problem. You know, they're narrow lots to begin with.